Good morning. Welcome to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting for April 21st, 2020. I'd like to remind everyone to silence your cell phones at this time. We have Commissioner Camardi is on the phone joining us remotely. Also, I'd like to remind everyone that the public may watch the meeting in the jury room on the third floor or on www.wangov.com. Those wishing to speak during the public comments or public hearing segments will be asked to wait in the jury room until escorted to the meeting by a deputy. So at this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner William Payton to do our invocation. Commissioner Payton?
Mr. Chairman, I was saying to you just a minute ago, I was kind of searching around on the Internet yesterday trying to find some inspiration as to what I might say in this prayer this morning. And I found some things, there were a collection of prayers, and I sort of put them together, so I hope they make sense. But anyway, power heads, please. "We pray for the sick and infected. God please heal and help sustain our bodies and spirits contained the spread of the infection. For our vulnerable populations, God protect our elderly and those suffering from chronic disease. For the young and the strong, God give them the necessary caution to keep them unwidely spreading this disease. Aspire them to help. For our local, state, and federal governments, God help our elected officials as they allocate the necessary resources from combating this pandemic. For our scientific community, leading the charge to understand the disease and communicate its gravity, God give them a knowledge, wisdom, and persuasive voice. For workers in a variety of industries facing layoffs and financial hardship, God keep them from panic and inspire your church to continuously support them." And finally, for all frontline workers, we thank you for your vocational call to serve all of us. Amen.
Before we have our pledge, I want to make sure, Mr. Camardi, are you on with us? Mr. Camardi, can you hear us?
I've heard you, Mr. Mayo.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, all right.
That's good, that's good. And Mr. Mayo, I ask everyone to speak clearly into their mics.
Okay, will do. You may have missed our invocation, but right now, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Commissioner Wayne Acock is going to do our pledge. Mr. Acock?
I hear the invocation.
Before we start, as Commissioner Payton just said, let's remember our first responders, our medical staff, our doctors, our nurses, everyone that is facing this head-on. And also, let's keep our military family, our men and women in uniform, in our thoughts and prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Acock. Okay, we're... For the approval of the minutes from April 7th, 2020, if the commissioners have had a chance to read those, what is the preference of the board?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes for April 7th, 2020. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, approval of the minutes. Discussion and adjustment of the agenda. Mr. Honeckut?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to add two things to the agenda if you're so willing to approve. Number one would be under consent agenda, add a number eight, motion to approve resolution in honor of telecommunications week in Wayne County. It will be based upon the state resolution and proclamation as well. And then, under new business, number two, respond to school system requests for potential property purchase in Fremont.
Any other changes by any commissioners? I would like to ask the commissioners on the Fremont purchase of the property, in your opinion, I think I'd like to see us move that up on the agenda if we can. They're already here.
We can do that, we could do that.
Commissioners, you have any problem with that?
Not at all.
Okay, Mr. Camardi, are you okay with moving the Fremont purchase of the school property up on the agenda? You okay with that?
I think that's very appropriate, Mr. Chairperson.
Okay. Do you want us to set it now?
We could do that now. We have the 9:30 public hearing, but that can be delayed a little bit. We just can't have it early, the public hearing early, we can have it later.
Okay, what's the preference of the commissioners?
You mean public comments or public hearing?
Public hearing.
Okay, I see, okay. Okay, so you want to move it up to next on the agenda?
After public comment, or Appointments Committee.
After the Appointments Committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Are you all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Now, making that change, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, agenda is carried. Okay, so we have the Appointments Committee, is that right?
Public comments.
Public comments.
Yes, sir.
We're going to go ahead and do that, I'm sorry. Do we have...
Mr. Lane, who is here for the public hearing, is the only person that's in the jury room.
Okay, so we have no one in the jury room for public comments, so the public comments section is closed at this time. Mr. Acock, we have Appointments Committee?
Yes, sir. We have three that we want to recommend today, and we'll vote on it at our next meeting. The first one is, this is a reappointment, Ms. Diane Smith, Wayne County Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, and this is a reappointment. That's in form of a motion.
Do we need a motion? Mr. Councilor says we're not going to vote on it until next meeting, or?
No, okay, okay, all right.
Right. Second one, this is a new appointment, Ms. Dolores Jones to the Community Child Facilities Prevention Team, replacing Ms. Viola Figueroa.
Got it, got it.
All right, and the third one, this is a reappointment, is Ms. Martha Bryan, Commissioners Council for Older Adult and Eastern Carolina Regional Aging Committee, and this is a reappointment. And we, like I said, we would like to make these recommendations and vote on them at our next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Acock. Okay, I guess our county manager will be back in a few minutes for our...
I think I'm going to get him.
He was going to get the individuals for the next item on the agenda?
The offer to purchase.
Yeah.
So he's going to get them.
Well, while we're doing that, if you commissioners, while we're waiting on that, if you commissioners want, let's go down to the consent agenda.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to present, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Mr. Camardi?
Yes.
Okay, so motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, you kind of make a motion that we approve the license agreement for the placement of the wireless broadband equipment
Yes.
upon Wayne County-owned towers and/or buildings with open broadband for one year.
Yeah, that's under new business, Mr. Camardi, item number one. We have a motion on the floor to approve the license agreement for the wireless broadband equipment.
With the changes that we've discussed.
With the changes that we have discussed, all in favor of that, say...
Just want to add some commentary to it.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we're having a comment.
Yes, thank you.
I'm moving...
No, I'm not against it, no, but I just want the public to understand that this has not put the equipment on every tower in the county at this time. It's a limited number, and it'll be another year before we get to some of them, so we're not giving up. I mean, we're pushing forward, and maybe it'll happen more quickly than that. I just wanted to make sure, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Payton, good point. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. So we have just, well, where's that county manager? Here he goes.
See, while he was out of the room, we moved on, didn't we?
Yeah. We okay?
Oh, all of it.
Well, we just took care of business, but you not here, so.
That's right.
Sure, if not going to rest, you go back and sit down.
All right.
Yeah.
If you got it, you already infected us.
And while you were getting everybody together, we have taken care of the rest of the, we went through the appointment, the...
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, and item number one of new business.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, I need to leave more.
So we are back to the item two of new business, we moved that back up to where that's up at this time. Greg?
Yes, we did the walk-on today, and you should have a copy in front of you for the offer to purchase contract that the school system has submitted for the Evans Farms, for the purchase of 20.8 acres in Fremont for a proposed new elementary school. And we do have our superintendent here, Chairman of Board of Education, and Dr. Harold is here. And if you have any questions, there, people answer.
Yes.
I'll be glad to start us off. I need to get a clarification, because there was a lot of discussion prior to the weekend of trying to resolve this from the standpoint of an 18-acre tract. And I don't know, and with that, it brought the cost down pretty substantially. And so my question is, why did we move off of the 18-acre tract and move to the more expensive property?
Would you, would you come up to, would you come up to the podium, please, if you will?
Can I approach, there's a map you'd like to look?
Sure.
Yes. We'll make copies.
That'd be great.
So there was a, I was made aware of a proposal. The only thing that we have contracts now through Mr. Cox was the 20-acre, 20.2 acres, is that right to me? And a section of a 5.2, which is right up against the highway. Based on DPI standards, we need a minimum to replicate Meadow Lane on that property of 17 acres. That's a bare minimum, with no boundaries, no nothing. The concern was that exit there, whether we needed a retaining wall. And if we only use that small portion, are we going to need a retention pond? Now, one of the differences over at Meadow Lane, we have that space, is you face the building to the right, that we didn't have to put any fields on, mainly because the county and the city are allowing us to use the fields and the parks at the new rec area. So if we squeeze that in on 17 acres or 18 acres, we're not sure with the driveways if it'll pass inspection. And it was just, I'm not sure that's a risk we want to take.
Well, in discussions with the architect, he absolutely said there was no issues in regards to placing the school on the 18 acres, with the full understanding that the original plot that he had taken and superimposed the footprint of Meadow Lane owned to that track was simply there not to actually place it, but actually to say, show that it could be placed on there, and there was leftover land. He also agreed that all of the existing entrances and exits and stackable lanes and parking lots and so forth would have to be reconfigured based upon the property, but you'd have to do that on any property.
Yes, sir.
So it just concerns me that we were basically using that sketch, I'm going to call it sketch. And the fact that the entrance was right up next to the exit off of 795, that really was not the end result. In other words, that was just simply only as reference, that it can go on there.
He can make it work. One of the things we're trying to avoid is additional engineering fees. And one of the reasons to have the additional property amount, because we own the engineering drawings for Meadow Lane, there's a considerable savings of keeping it as close to that as possible. And if we go up there and do boring samples, and that's not suitable property, he was at our meeting yesterday, can he fit it on that property? Sure. Are we probably looking at more engineering fees? I would pretty be pretty confident, yes.
Well, based upon that conversation that I had with him, he was saying if you move the school footprint to the east toward Fremont, that you would not run into a retaining wall that you would need to place over there.
If I can jump in.
Okay.
Because I'm trying my friend to do that, yeah. So if you, how far are you going to go back, Mr. Darty? Because so we started this in January, because obviously, we started this...
I'm just going back to Friday, in the conversation that...
You had with our architect?
That's correct.
Right, so when we met as a board, I can hear myself now, sorry. When we met as the board met, and we looked at these options, we looked at three different potential options. As going through the process, we actually looked at three different potential properties in Fremont. Of course, one is now off the market, that was sold within the month, I'm assuming. So when we look at the drawing you have, and Mr. Honeckut's making a copy of the other drawing we have, you'll see the school itself. And what had happened in that option is it began to shift the school further to 795. So when we first started the negotiations with this option, we were only told we could buy 15 acres. So if you look at the school, you'll see a black line around the school, not including that triangle at the bottom. That black line around the school is the school sitting on 15 acres. So then we went back and said, we have to have at least 18 acres. So then they agreed, the family, that they would sell us that triangle behind the school, which would give us 18 acres. Part of the concerns that we had with going into that corner is, remember at 795 and 222, you have the exit and on ramp, which has an elevation to us. There's about 360 to 68 feet that is unusable road frontage to this property, as the school gets shifted further into the corner, because you're going up elevation. Now, we have not, as the board asked me...
Which corner are you shifting?
So the school is shifting closer towards 795.
Why are you shifting it that way?
Because that's the only piece of property the family would sell us. So we had to shift it that way to make it fit.
No, we were shifting it to this side.
You can't, because the family would...
Well, the engineer...
The family would not sell us that side, that's what I'm trying to say.
Wait a minute.
What you're seeing here is what the family would sell us, because in that agreement, they wanted to now withhold more land on the other side, and refuse to sell it to us for anything less than the price we have on that piece.
My understanding is, looking at that, that shaded in green was the 18 acres. Is that correct?
No.
That's the 20...
Well, that was...
That's the 26 that we were looking at buying, shaded in.
No, no, I think you're confused, because if you look there, the unshaded area right here
Correct.
is the one with the blue line ditch.
Yes.
Is that, that is not included.
Correct.
So therefore...
The family wants to keep that.
That's correct. Well, what you've done now is, you've shifted it all, and including this property with the blue line ditch.
No, no, you're confused.
I'm confused.
Yes, you're confused. May I, I know we're worried about COVID-19, but can I come up to point some stuff out, so I can eliminate the confusion?
So there is no blue line ditch on this property?
Where the school is, there is on the side closer to Fremont, you're correct. So if I can start from the beginning.
You see a blue line ditch on here, correct?
Correct.
I can see it right here.
Yeah, that's not, that's not property we're purchasing.
Right, right.
So when we started this negotiation with the family, our first option was we only wanted the 20, well, at the time, you can see, there's a light blue line here that goes between the school or through the school. There's a 5.2-acre tract there.
Right.
Because that farm was divided by 795 when it was built.
Okay.
And the Evans owned it. There is no ditch there. The Evans family tore down a house there, covered the ditch, tore down trees, and they farmed through it, through that 5.2-acre tract. There is no ditch there in that property.
Correct.
The ditch is wherever to the right. So when we started, we only wanted to buy from that ditch, or excuse me, from that blue line, that 5.2 acres over to the right to the town of Fremont. That's what we started with the family. The family came back, I'm sorry.
Going to the red line that's on this man?
No, all the way over.
All the way over to include the blue line?
Because it's one track.
That's correct.
So that's when we started. So the family came back and said, we will not sell you that, because we want to hold out at least five acres next to the town of Fremont, which is fine with us, because the blue line ditch is in it. But we also would like for you to purchase the 5.2 acres, because we have a concern that if you just buy this piece, that it's going to be landlocked, and we cannot do anything with it. So that was option one to our board, that went to our board, was to purchase the 20.8 plus the 5.2, separate buyer agreements, they were not linked together. So then we came back and went into negotiations to try and get the price down, going back to the family. The family come back and said, okay, we'll negotiate, but we'll sell you the 5.2 at a cheaper price, and we'll sell you 10 acres, give us 15. And we'll lower the price the closer you get to 795. So then we came back and said, we can't put the school on 15, the 15 is the black line. Will you please sell us at least three more to give us 18? The family said, we'll give you eight, we'll sell three more and give you 18, which is the triangle behind the school. So the options that went to our board were buy the 26 acres from that red line, Mr. Darty, all the way over. And that's the, or, we had an option also to look at potentially 18, that we had no agreement on. We have not signed any agreement just on these, on the 18 acres, where the black line is over, but that was discussed. And then the other option was, since we have separate buyer agreements, offers to purchase on 5.2 and 20.8, we could execute both or one. So our board chose, looking at this and the potential of school being all the way over on the left, you've got 360-some feet of road frontage you can't use because of being on the ramp there, on an exit ramp, that they elected to go with the 20.8, which would be positioning the school in that other diagram. Mr. Honeckut, did you give the board the other diagram?
Yes.
All right, so that diagram you have there of the school, that's the tract, yes, sir. And there's a position of the school on another one that Mr. Honeckut has, it looks like this, but the school shifted further to the left. But that would not include, the offer you have for you today does not include the diagram. Would I have shaded the 5.2? It doesn't include that, it just includes the 20.8. So does that eliminate your confusion?
And Dr. Harold, you may want to add too. The architect yesterday, we had him in our board, and he expressed some concerns of having, quote, enough usable land, including the 5.2-acre tract. He's not sure until he gets in, looks at the topography, does soul tests, whether he's going to have enough usable land to make the 18 acres work, period. So that's why our board yesterday decided to let's make the recommendation request that we execute the contract we have on the 20.2 acres that we know is all usable land and that we can make it work on. And then excluded the 5.2 acres that he has questions about.
So you've got a copy of that? On my plot plan there, it shows a real light line corresponding with that blue line ditch.
That's the town of Fremont, that's the city limit of Fremont.
So this is the city line, that is not the blue line ditch.
Right.
So this light line is the city limits.
Yeah, so that was...
So we need to, the other piece of that is, as long as we have the sewage and water, because you get in, it's about 300 a linear foot if you got to run sewage lines. So we want to be connecting on that line, that we have to...
Well, I apologize. You can see the confusion, because it certainly looks like that is the blue line ditch.
It is.
But that is the...
Town of Fremont.
Town of Fremont.
The blue line, Mr. Darty, if you see, it's actually in the color map, it's more brown.
Right, right, right.
His artwork is in the same place as the limits.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. May.
I've just got to stay in front of the mic at all times if possible. I know you guys are doing it, but Mr. Camardi's on the line listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Camardi, can you hear okay?
I'm sorry.
Can you, can you hear the conversations okay?
Yes, I can. I was following the explanation about the options and so forth, heard that clearly.
Okay, we're going to continue that. I want to make sure that you could, you could hear what's going on.
I certainly can, I certainly can.
Okay, we have...
And, Mr., I'll repeat, Mr. Mayo, when you're speaking into the mic, I hear you clearly. The presenters have a tendency to trail off, because they are looking at you all, and there's a little bit of a difference in their perception of what can be heard when they're looking at the person who's receiving, rather than listening the way I'm listening. So please encourage everyone to speak into their mics.
Would it help if we, can we take that mic there and put it up on the ledge? Would that help, as far as?
It may, sir.
Yeah, let's try that.
Well, these are tall gentlemen.
Well, that's true. Now, I just wanted to say that you do have two contracts, and the reason I know is that we have copies of that.
Right.
That makes sense now, because the county manager has that for us commissioners to look at. So what you decided to do is that you went back to the original contract, left off the 5. some acres, and went with the 20.8.
Yes, sir. And that, that reduced the price by $78,000 to leave off the 5.2.
From the initial...
From the initial total.
Whatever it was.
Right. So the price, the price per acre is, you know, when I, when I looked at your offer to purchase here from yesterday, I figured it seemed to be, if you use the 312 divided by 20.8, it comes out to 15,000 acres. But is that what, is, I didn't see that on the original contract that you got. Am I missing something here?
Yes, sir. It should, that's, that's a... That's a copy of the original, it should be, Chairman Mayo, of the, because we have two, you're correct. We have one for the 5.2 and offer to purchase, and one for the 20.8, and they're not linked. They're not connected, where we have to execute both of them together. They're not connected where we have to execute both of them together. As we started the process, we have the appraisal on the property. It was done on request of BBNT. The property was appraised at $495,000, which is 16.5 an acre.
Who did that appraisal? We, we have a copy of that, don't we, Craig?
I do.
Yeah.
Matthew Edwards.
Matthew Edwards.
Yes, sir. At the request, and it was done in February. Can I have that if you need it, Mr. Doherty?
No, I'm good.
So. I was thinking that the price per acre was, and this, this number kept floating around, at 14, 14,600, you know?
When you combined the two, it dropped.
Yeah, okay. All right. So you're, okay, you got, you got the $5,000 earnest money. See, I'm, I'm including everything. I'm not taking the $5,000 earnest money out because we had to pay it, so it's part of the cost.
If, if I can, I have a tendency to talk a lot and I apologize.
I want you to.
But you can tell I'm very passionate about this and our schools and our kids.
I want you to talk, yes.
So I would, I do want the commissioners to know, because, because we've heard it and we listen, we do, that we are trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and trying to do the best that we can for the county. Because we know this is a decision that is bigger than just our children. It's about that, but it's also economic development, it's opportunities in our communities that we have. This process started back in January, as, as we know. And we looked at three potential tracts in Fremont, trying to keep the school there for the community and the area that we needed it. One is now off the market. One had some environmental issues. And keeping the school on this side of Fremont, this is, this is the tract that is available. You know, if you move to the northern top of Fremont, you're getting closer to Wilson County, which is not a best situation to just put that school when you're looking at attendance lines potentially. You start moving to the western side, or excuse me, to the eastern side, and you've got more parcels that are potentially divided by blue line streams, things like that. So this was the best option that we had. So I don't want the, please the commissioners people to think that the school board has not done its due diligence when trying to maintain our commitment to our, our communities as well as our kids and trying to get the best price that we can for this school.
Okay, any, any other questions?
I was just going to make a couple of comments.
Yeah.
And I said it wouldn't be, I'm going to. The fact that the quarter cent sales tax did not pass, and we all, and everybody in this room supported it, means we don't have any money to build a school. Is this the right time to buy a property when we're looking a huge hole in our budget? I mean, they won't get any money from the state. They got a $2 billion hole in their budget already. So I'm just, and we don't know what's going to happen going forward. Is this just a one-time offer or they consider later on? Or, you see what I'm getting at?
So the current offer is good to May 1st. We have asked for an extension. We asked for that a couple of weeks ago and the family did not agree to give us an extension on this particular offer to purchase for the 5.2 and the 20.8. So we did ask for an extension, but they, they did not. There is a clause in the contract that if we're trying to do our due diligence to close, that we can have an addition of 14 days in that contract. Our, our close date is May 18th. The due diligence period is over May 1st. The close date is May 18th. If we do not get an extension from the family or through the contract, get additional 14 days.
Well, I hope they would consider the fact that we don't really know what our, well, she's not in here, our CFO. But we don't yet know what shortages we're going to have. We don't know if we can get raises, we don't know if we can give you guys raises. I'm, I just really, and I'm not going to be sitting here next year anyway, but I still care about what happens. So those things need to be kept in mind by all of us. I'm not against building a school up in Fremont. I think it's a great thing. And I think a lot of the Evans family I've known in my entire life. I just think it's something we're going to have to keep in mind.
And I, I understand your concern and it's a valid concern. However, I, I mean, I don't want to be too optimistic, but we've, we've got to hope that certainly this thing's going to come to an end in a hurry, hopefully sooner than later. I mean, for the good of the economy and everybody else in the country, including the citizens of Wayne County. So obviously, we have to certainly take that in consideration because we're right now into the month of April without the state budget being passed. That, that, just how long is that going to go on? I, I think there's going to be, I don't understand, or maybe that's just me not understanding it, but I think that the legislature's going to have to pass. Have we ever had a year where a budget didn't pass? Have we ever worked without a budget, period, in the history of time? I don't think so. So saying that, I just got to think that those, hopefully our people in Raleigh are going to work diligently to try to pass the budget. I mean, they're coming up on, we're coming up on another budget year. So I mean, I don't, I don't think there's ever been a time when we didn't have a budget pass. So it's taken some negotiations and some considerations on both sides, but I think for the good of the people, I think they're going to do their job and pass the budget. So when the budget passes, we're going to get state money dropped.
Yeah, we have, we have 19 million in that present state budget. So that's.
Yeah, well, no.
We have 19 million in the state budget that's delayed. That is specifically earmarked for school building. That's the only thing we can use it for.
So we got to May 20th, is that right?
May, May 8.
May 1st.
1st.
Well, but our close date's the 14th, so we have the extra, the 18th, excuse me.
I'd like to hear some optimism from Representative Bell and Senator Perry. Because I know that if the money's going to be there, I've got no problem. I'll say this, Mr. Page and Commissioners. I guess if you look down the road, hopefully, like I said, the budget's going to pass. I, I think it's inevitable, it's got to pass sooner or later, sooner hopefully. But, you know, there was some conversation up until last Wednesday that there was not a whole lot of market for land in Fremont. Well, you know, somebody slipped in on Tuesday last week and bought one of our other viable options. So unless we can make this happen, there's not, there's not even more land available in Fremont, in close proximity to the city limits. So then our only option is going to be to go outside of the city, a mile, two miles, three, four, five, however far. We have to go to buy land suitable to build a school on. And then it's going to be the burden of you guys, I guess, to provide sewer and water to our school that we build. I just don't think, I think it's important that we don't let the opportunity get away from us for the piece of land in Fremont. That's, that's just my opinion. Because like I say, I, I'm counting big on our guys doing what they're supposed to do and are going to do, and that's pass a budget. So I, I just don't think we need to be looking at the expense. When you look at the expense of $300 plus dollars a linear foot to run sewer and water to a building, I mean, even a mile, I mean, you can see, and I'll go back to the Grantham School. I mean, you all know what we went through down there with the sewer and it was a nightmare for us. And for you guys as well, so, and an expense. So at the end of the day, and I don't think you'll be able to realize it until the project is complete, but we're going to save enough using a current design that we have at Meadow Lane in architectural fees, design fees or whatever. But you won't be able to realize that savings until the project's complete. But I think we'll more than save enough money to offset this $35,000, $40,000 difference we're talking about here, not bickering about, but discussing about the price of that particular piece of land. So I mean, I can't guarantee that, but that's my best opinion.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Blake. Couple of things. You mentioned the Grantham Sewer. And that's one reason that we're dubious on some of the decisions that we make. You know, we, we got bad information on that deal. I mean, you know, I'm not saying y'all, but, but, you know, we were, we were led to believe one thing and then it turned out that it, it was bad information. I'm, I'm not going to use the word that we lied to. I'm just going to say we got some bad information. But that's one reason that we're dubious on spending this kind of money anywhere. And secondly, you said that the budget will eventually get passed. It's always the first favorite thing.
You're right.
And, and true, the budget may get passed, but what's going to be taken out of that budget to get passed? Because something's going to have to change in it before the governor will ever sign it. Because he vetoed it and, and, you know, the ball's on his end of court. Just something's going to have to be changed in that budget before it ever gets passed.
I don't disagree with you, with all due respect. I, I don't think, and I don't know because I've not studied the state budget intensely like that, but I don't think that, I, I don't think that the money coming to Wayne County Public Schools or to Wayne County, period, in the state budget, I don't know that that's part of the issue. And I, I don't know.
And I agree with you. I don't know either. I don't know either.
You know, so with 100 LEAs in the state, I don't think that the, the amount of funding that was coming to Wayne County in the state budget was going to be what Kevin, I, I know you're not saying that it did. He didn't sign it for some reason. I, I was told that they were one vote away from passing the budget this last time they had a vote, and they would hopefully to pass it the next time they voted on. So we're just.
And guess where that, and guess where that one vote's from? Yeah. I, everybody's, everybody's had a few comments here except me. I want to say a few things. Number one is, I guess we're in a situation, if you snooze, you lose. That's where we're at. What I'm concerned about is that 38,000 difference that, that, that we talked about last night on the phone and so forth. It's, it's not that big of a deal. It's not. But my concern is, in this property, whether we have a pandemic in place or the budget's not been signed by the state legislature. These improvements, because the quarter cent sales tax didn't pass, these improvements that we presented 27 different times during the campaign for the quarter cent sales tax, these projects are going to have to be done at some point in time, whether we like it or not, whether it's the state budget or not. The key is, is that this school is going to have to be addressed at some point. Now, my point is this. Do we let this slide by? And somebody will buy this property. We, since we lost the option on the other piece of property, we're down to one basically if we want to stay in this area. Are there other properties around? Do we have to spend one or two billion dollars for water and sewer to get to it? The key is, is that we go ahead and buy the property, and my understanding is that you guys have the money. The county does not have to provide any additional funding to buy this property. My take is, is why not go ahead and look at buying this property? Go ahead and get it done. And look, if we don't build on it for five years, it's not going to do anything but go up in value. Now, it's in my district and I don't want to sound like that I'm, you know, that I'm, I'm totally, no matter what here. I'm real concerned. I'm real concerned about the price per acre. I've got a little bit of a problem that we had at one point, as Chris, you and I talked about last night. We had some of this same property at 12.5 at one point per acre. But I also understand that we lost a lot of, a lot of our bargaining power when that other property sold. I understand that. So having said that, whether we like it or not, we're going to have to, we're going to have to move our county forward. And I guess you're going to have to say at this point, where's our faith? Because changes are going to have to be made. We're going to have to build some schools. Somebody, somewhere, is going to have to come up with some money. So I'm, I'm saying that do we just let this slide by and try to conserve 38,000? I'm saying no. I'm saying since you feel like and you know that you have to fund it, that. I got another question I want to ask you. I've been asked this and, and some, even some elected officials have asked it. Is the actual location in Fremont, and I've been asked this question. Is that, is that location, was it picked because we wanted to do something for Fremont? Or is it in fact the place that that school needs to be built?
So as you recall, we went through that demographic study last year.
Yes.
And, and part of that was that our first priority was to build a new school in the northern end. Now, they didn't specifically say in Fremont.
Right.
But obviously with the sewage connection, that's a huge cost issue. And DPI even recommends that you build schools on a sewage line because of that. So that was where we tried to keep it where the existing school is in that proximity.
The other thing, Mr. Mayo, is the current Fremont Elementary School is geographically pretty, essentially located to northeast elementary and northwest elementary because obviously we're trying to alleviate some of the overcrowding and 14 mobile units at northwest. Northeast is busting at the scene there. They don't have room to seat one more child there. So centrally, geographically located, I mean, that's as probably as central as we could get between the two that we're going to have to draw from to populate the school, so.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Blake. That brings up another question. You're looking at moving some students from northwest and northeast. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Fremont just sold some of their capacity. Is that going to be an issue? This school is going to have quite a bit more students than what the school's got in Fremont now? Is that, is that going to create an issue?
They, they sold their sewer capacity back to Goldsboro, but there's still capacity in the lines. That just means that they may have to deal with Goldsboro for getting that instead of Fremont.
It's all about the money.
Yes, sir.
It's all about the money. You know, that just.
But I, I think there's plenty of capacity there that, that would allow for this. And, and I think Fremont had over a half million gallons per day that they sold back to the city. You would just have to go through Goldsboro probably to get the, that allocation.
Okay, and, and another question. When, when and if this school gets built, what's going to happen to the old school in Fremont? The county don't want it.
Well, some of the buildings probably.
Yeah, we, we've done some work on the buildings as best as we can because it is, the old part of that school is old. It's shot. It's literally crumbling down. Some of the other areas, the newer portion could be repurposed. Wages has expressed interest in that property once we vacate it because they need more space further northern. They have the facility in Belfast now. So there are some other options out there. The old part of the building probably is going to need to be razed.
And we've given, again, we're trying to be good stewards of the money that the taxpayers have given us out of the fund forward that the commissioners give us every year, our $2 million. We've continued to operate that school and keep it because we don't know how long we're going to have to operate it. So we've replaced both boilers in that building since I've been here. We updated the air conditioning system in the 1955 building because we've had to, because we've had children in that building and we're going to continue to serve it. We've removed the asbestos out of that building at about $37,000. So we've, we've continued to do what we need to do in all of our schools to continue to make sure they're safe for our children and they're operating. And that's what we're going to continue to do. So part of my thought is, is that when a new school is constructed, the school's going to have a little bit of life left because we've upgraded some of the structure in it. So there's some opportunities there for that, that property. It's going to be interesting to see what happens to the property that was just purchased from the group out of Wilmington. What are they going to do with that property? You know, I think opinions like Bella Buttons, everybody's got one. You know, from where I've come and seen new schools constructed, there's usually development that comes around in new school, usually housing and things like that. Who knows what this potential decision is going to not only affect our children, but when it comes to the economy of Wayne County and the people of the northern end, what it's going to do when you've got, you know, a beautiful 109,000 square foot school that looks like Meadow Lane, just with a green roof, a daffodil and a terrazzo, you know, and the Hornets are back. You don't know what it's going to do to that in the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cromarty. Yes.
I, I would just like to make a comment. Whenever we had the quarter cent sales tax on the table and the school board put together the list of items that we thought we could move forward, the, the school that we're talking about was on the top of the list and it's quarter cent. list, and if quarter cent sales tax had passed, we would be on the way. But the history of Wayne County, uh, is that we've had to buy prop, the property had been bought, and I use this in a positive vein for speculative purposes, forbidden sin industry. And now we're talking about the school system. And I can't quite see how we're gonna separate our philosophy. Land, land, eh, they're not making any more land, and, and after listening to Dr. Harrell, I would feel that the school system has done their due diligence about trying to select the piece of property that's best for the school site if we were able to start next year, uh, based upon dollars available. It may be five years. But the land is not, they're not gonna grow any more land, and we know that. And it sounds like we don't need to move closer to Wilson County. So, and, and then all of a sudden, take, also taking into consideration for the sewer system. Although, uh, I've listened oftentimes to secondhand discussions about the Grantham Project and the file analysis, we all had to vote on what it would take to make the sewer system work out there, and we certainly don't want to run into the same problem in the north. And I, I want to make this last comment. Uh, a, and this is not exactly being territorial, but I have to listen to what our chairperson, Mr. Mayo, has said. Now, we all know that we're interested in our districts. In some degree, we're interested in the whole county, but in some of our districts. And Mr. Mayo has cooperated, uh, with the south to help get some things for the school system that we wanted down this way. And when the school system put their priorities together, I feel confident that, that, that when the school system made their vote, and they voted to decide to go in this direction, I, I would be remiss if we didn't support that, uh, concept, but especially based on the fact that, uh, Dr. Harrell gave a, I've, I've listened to a good presentation this morning, and I think we've, we, we may be arriving at the point where we need to go ahead and get this land, and hopefully we could build them, build them soon. And based upon whatever the budget turns out to be, it may be sooner than later, but we will have to be prepared whenever the opportunity comes. So, uh, I would just encourage us to look positively on this and, and move forward. That, that's my comment, Mr. Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Baycott.
Uh, you mentioned in your words a while ago, and now Mr. Kamara has mentioned again. I think the last time I checked, this is in my district too.
It is.
It is.
So is the south, Mr. Aco.
So is the south. Everywhere is your district.
Yeah, yeah, exactly right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Daughery.
Okay. Uh, I asked the attorney today, I said, can we go in closed session to have these discussions? And he said, no. Um, so I, I want to be sensitive, sensitive in regards to my comments here. But I will say this, we have made some mistakes in this negotiations on this piece of property. I have never seen a public, such a public discussion of the viability or the possibility of purchasing property. Generally, this is supposed to be done very, very quietly, so that landowners don't perceive it as an opportunity to take advantage of a government entity. We'll leave it at that. Please let's learn from this that we do not repeat it.
That's the reason.
Now, that is about as sensitive as Joe Daughery yet.
That's, that's the reason I've got a question that I can ask.
Okay. Uh, secondly, uh, you mentioned several times about savings on the architect, because we're using the Meadow Lane plans. How much of a savings are we looking at? Look at, you had that number right there.
I did this yesterday.
We, we, we put it down pretty, put a lot of effort into that.
Because that was also questions our board asked. So, for Meadow Lane, when that project was originally bid, it was bid as a sixteen, I'm sorry, Mr. Kamara, when that project was originally built, a bid, it was bid at a sixteen million dollar project. Six percent of that's architectural fees. So, we spent one million, nine thousand dollars on architectural fees. Now, remember, we, we own Meadow Lane, but we do not own the design that belongs to Pinnacle.
Okay.
Does that make sense? You know, because it's their architectural plan. We own the building at Meadow Lane. So, when you re, like most districts around us, when you get a design you like, the goal is to try to reproduce that design if you're satisfied with it, because we'll say schematic design was a hundred and fifty thousand, design development was two hundred and one. We'll have a reduced architectural fee, because we will build the same building, so they will not charge as much. So, our cost avoidance projection on that alone is four hundred and fifty to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, rather than a million, you're looking at a half a million?
We're gonna reduce it now.
See, I, I round up numbers.
Right. Obviously, we can't project, part of that cost is also the construction development phase, where you have your site surveys, soil testing, all those things. For Meadow Lane, that was four hundred thousand dollars to have that, you know, the, um...
But you gotta assume you're gonna have the same.
You gotta assume that you're gonna have that. Yes, sir. The other thing to think about when we started looking at, because we did consider the old property. That was a discussion. We considered the old property. You know, we have eight acres there. The school sits on four and a half. It might be eight and a half. So, to increase our capacity to what we needed, because we have the K-three class size initiative, that's law that we have, we discussed numerous times, we would need to increase that school, obviously. Well, you can't put a capacity of seven hundred on eight acres. If you were lucky to get five hundred, you'd have to go up. Well, the architectural fee goes up two percent if you go up. So, if you were happen to get a nineteen million dollar project, which is the money in the state budget, and if you did two story, you're now at an eight percent fee. So, you're gonna increase your architectural fees by half a million dollars. So, you're potentially saving by going one story, what we have. You're gonna reduce two percent of the architectural fees, because you're not going up. And then you're gonna reduce four hundred to five hundred thousand by using the same building again, because we've eliminated schematic design. We've eliminated those processes. They're there. And the architect has agreed to come down, because we're, we're on their six percent, to five and a half, to maybe four. So, we might could save two hundred thousand off the architectural fees.
So, you are negotiating with the architect to bring that figure down, because it's the same building, and they should do it for four or less.
I knew, sir, in January, I was gonna have to stand here and talk to you in, in April. So, I was trying to, but yes, sir, there's savings. And the other thing to think about is there is sewer there. And so, yes, we do not know, um, the, the, the potential yet of the, um, inflows and what we need to do. So, yes, there's gonna be a little bit of cost when we hook up to the Fremont sewer. Um, Pinnacle's building a school right now in Anzlo. It cost him three hundred thousand just to get sewer to that school.
Uh, next, I want to discuss something that I don't think this board was aware of. I certainly was not aware of. I kept hearing, uh, from Representative Bell that on the lottery funds, they had actually set aside seventy-five million dollars for tier one and tier two counties to use. But there was a little caveat put to it. If you do that, you've got to give up your lottery proceeds that you're receiving every year. Well, we immediately, I did, I just threw that to one side and said, well, we can't give it up, because we've already obligated those dollars for the payment on other loans to build other schools. However, uh, a now new friend of mine, Senator Perry, uh, and I were talking, and he explained to me that that's not the case. You actually only give up five years of those funds. And those dollars are set aside for tier one counties. They have top priority. So, basically, the way I'm figuring it, now y'all may figure it different than I do. If we applied for that loan, or that grant, actually, it's a grant.
Yes, it's a grant.
If you apply for the grant, and the, we receive that, then it would cost the county one point two million dollars annually for five years, and then that school's paid for. So, basically, for five...
Six million.
Six million dollars. That's right. I had to round up that, too. Uh, six million dollars, you've got a sixteen million dollar facility that's paid for. You, you, you follow me?
Yeah.
I mean, I never looked at it this way, and I wish that all of us, because I don't think y'all looked at it that way either.
They, they, they changed some of that, and I got the news like when you did, and, and Mr. Honeycutt and I, and that's when we started looking at that, uh, because they upped, um, I think the original projection with, uh, what we were eligible in grant money was less, yeah.
We were looking at ten originally. I think it's now up to fifteen.
It's up to fifteen.
Well, and with that in mind, I would encourage, uh, and, and I'm going to make a motion in a little while, uh, so, by just giving you a heads up. Uh, and that motion would be probably conditional upon you all going ahead and applying for that grant. It, we don't know. Uh, you gotta recognize, we do have a budget. It's a continuation budget is what it was, and it is. And there's no motivating reason right now for the two sides to come together, because on one side, they're just too entrenched. And at this point, it's politically playing for both sides. When we got election coming up in November, and they're thinking of that. Seems like everything is projected to an election coming up in November. But with that in mind, there are dollars out there, and we certainly would either use them in this case, or we would be using them in the Rosewood case. And since that's here, and we have no other funding stream, I think this is the, the better course of action. So, I would, uh, like your input on applying for those funds.
Yeah, ab- absolutely. I mean, I, I think part of that is conditionally, we'll have to work through you and Mr. Honeycutt and I, because of the, the way the funding streams are. We would have to have your approval for that. But we can put that...
When are those grants, what's the cutoff date?
We, I sent you the information.
I know, but I forgot.
I believe it's August.
It's in August.
It's in August. You have to apply for the grant before. It's August fifteenth or something. So, if it's in that information, I'll send you.
So, for this year, you would have to make the application?
Yes.
And my understanding, it has to be a shovel-ready project?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, which this would qualify for?
Yes, sir.
Would it not?
Yes.
Um, anyway, I, I'd like some input on, on that in regards to what your thoughts are on.
I, I would, I would like for, and we, you and I have talked about this. I'm aware of this. That's a great point. Also, keep in mind, we keep connecting this to the quarter cent sales tax, but what we said was, is that whether the quarter cent sales tax passed or not, that the Fremont school would still be top of the list. Remember that?
Yes.
We did say that.
Yes.
Okay, the board, the board said that. You guys said that. And, and I'm, I'm just saying what we initially had agreed on. I like what you're saying, Commissioner Daughery, because what it does, it gives me hope that we're not buying this property that's gonna sit there five or six years, you know?
Well, now, of course, we come the key, that I'm sure Commissioner Pate's asking, and that is, where are you gonna come up with the one point two million dollars on an annual basis for the next five years? I, I, you didn't even ask.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Well, and it is gonna be a question. We are not obligated for accepting the grant unless it's awarded, and then at that point, we, we would have to make a decision of whether or not we could find those dollars.
It would not affect this year's budget. It would not affect this year's budget, because since it would not be awarded until August, and you would probably not get any reimbursements until late into, uh, twenty twenty-one, you know?
It will give us some time, because it, it's saying that they award it in September. Um, I think that's optimistic, but anyway, if they did, then it would be that we would have to see where we're gonna come up with the dollars, and if we can't come up with the dollars, then we would have to say, unfortunately, we're gonna have to pass on. Uh, but it, it's something I think we need to at least have that application in on. And number two, although, although we may not, may not have any interest in any portion of that property, I certainly would like to have the county have first option before you lease that to anyone or sell it, that the county would have first option, first right of refusal on any portion of that.
On the twenty and the five point two, either, either or.
No, no, I'm talking about on the existing school that's there.
Okay.
So, once you build the new school, before you sign a lease with wages or anyone else...
That's in our board policy.
Back to us and talk to us to make sure that we definitely do not want it.
And, and that's board policy for us. That's already in our policy.
Okay. Well, then, good then. Um...
I'm gonna backstream just a little bit, since we're talking about money. I have not heard anybody discussed what kind of dollars is gonna be, that it's gonna take to improve the road in front of it. I mean, it's gonna have to be, I mean, has anybody talked to DOT? I mean, are we not that far along? I mean, they, they will have to be, you know, anytime you're dealing with DOT, when you're talking turn lanes and all, you're talking big bucks. I mean, that's...
Well, I would think that DOT, I, I mean, I don't know. We've had, we've had several instances in the past, one at northeast, because, um, Mr. Pate helped me with this. They have discretionary fundings, our representatives do, and that's, some of that money has been used in the past for turn lanes. Obviously, on two twenty-two, if that school, if it's built, there, there's gonna have to be a turn lane put there because of the volume of traffic. But I mean, I guess that's a question that DOT would have to answer, and whether they're in a position to fund it, or whether we have some representatives who have discretionary money that would, would be willing to use that to fund that turn lane or highway improvements or whatever there is. So...
Mr. Swett, for Meadow Lane? Um, Commissioner Aco. For Meadow Lane, our turn lane improvement there was included in the project. So, our, our civil engineer, when the civil engineer did the site surveys, the civil engineer will include what driveway expansions or additions need to be done, and will contact Department of Transportation to see what permissions need to be granted for that, which again is one of those concerns that we have with that corner and that, uh, three hundred and sixty-seven feet of that ramp, because we know DOT is not gonna allow us to do anything to the exit and on ramp in that corner. They're not gonna do that.
Well, I mean, that's federal. I mean, they really, really DOT, they maintain it, but, but that's, that's federal highway.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I guess, before you depart, we just, we just, and this is totally separate from what we're talking about here. I just want to ask a question, Chris and all of you. We just, we just approved another subdivision at northwest that joins Goose Creek, and we know we've had an issue there, uh, of parking and pick up the students and all this. Sometimes down Noam Road, you might see it backed up probably almost to where the subdivision's gonna be.
Beyond where that subdivision...
Beyond where that subdivision's gonna be. Please get with somebody. Take a look at that. We've had complaints for years from, from citizens in that area. That is a dangerous, dangerous situation. Please take a look at that, would you?
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Noam Road is really not as big an issue as Popper Springs.
Well, that's true.
So, thank, thank you for, for those comments, because we have. So, if, if you've, uh, been aware, we've had several traffic studies done of our schools, and we've had improvements made at our school that has cost the school system or the commission no money. So, we had a driveway, um, renovation done at northeast that was paid for from state monies. We, we had a study done at Rosewood Elementary School. That driveway was expanded to have more car stacking ability that was paid for by state monies, not from us, because there are, there are monies out there that DOT has to help alleviate congestion on state-maintained roads on private property that can spend it there. So, we've had a traffic study completed at Norwane. So, we're supposed to meet on that, come in soon to see what can be done there, because we have an issue there. In our original, when, when we first put, um, as you remember, the northwest project out to bid, when we did the Southern Wayne GM at the time, which we've not done that project, we included looking at expanding the driveway there, Commissioner Mayo, to include, um, car stacking ability to get them off the road, because we get those calls as well. So, with that project not, um, happening at this time, we can go back and request through DOT another traffic study to be done, because we do have property there, you know, that we can potentially expand that drive. And usually what happens is DOT hires a third-party vendor. They have several, and they come in, they meet with us, and they do a traffic study while school's in session. So, we, obviously, we wouldn't do it now because of the COVID-nineteen. And they'll do, uh, study, they'll, they'll come back with several designs, and they will usually pick the one for us, because the money is the state money, so they're gonna be as frugal as they can, and they'll pick the design that they will approve, and we can accept that design. pick the design that they will approve, and we can accept that design, they'll give us multiple, and we can pick a different one, but if we pick a different one, then we have to be willing to help foot the cost of that.
Thank you. We have any other comments from commissioners? Thank y'all for coming.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's been very enlightening.
Glad to be here.
Okay. Any further discussion, commissioners? Any preference from the board on this particular item?
Could we, uh, take a five-minute recess?
Yes, we can, we certainly can.
Five-minute recess?
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Hello?
Okay, I got you. Okay, we're, uh, we're back from our break, and, uh-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Daugherty.
I move that we authorize the, um, County Board of Election to proceed with the-
Whoop, County Board of Election?
I'm sorry, of Education. My goodness, uh, the Board of Education to proceed with the purchase, uh, of the property that's under contract with Evans Farms in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for twenty point eight acres. Conditional upon the Board of Education by majority vote, uh, agreeing to enter, to enter into a joint application with the county for the tier-one lottery grant funds for the financing of the new school building.
And if it also could be contingent upon budget amendment, um, as well?
I'm just saying, inappropriate.
Inappropriate budget-
An appropriate budget amendment.
Okay, can you repeat that?
No. Will you read that back, clerk?
Okay, we ha- we have a motion on the floor, uh, is there any comments from any commissioner? Any comments? Mr. Kamarti, any comment? Okay, uh, all, all in favor of the motion that presented, uh, say yes, please?
Yes.
All opposed, no?
Yes.
No.
Okay, okay, we have, uh, motion carries, we have one note, so motion does carry. All right, Mr. Honeycutt?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I do have Aaron Stryker and also Ken Stern is here.
Well, we got a public-
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, we got to do the public comment. I mean, the public hearing, the public hearing.
I've seen Bill Lane looking through that.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
We're only an hour late.
Yeah, we're only an hour late, so, uh, this-
All right, I'll, I'll do it.
What's that?
Live, live screens, yeah. Oh, my goodness. Well, I don't want any record of my motion.
Okay, we, uh, we're in, uh, a public, a call of a public hearing at this time, even though we're an hour late, I'm sorry, uh, but at this time, we have public, uh, hearing to receive public comments on a proposed amendment to the Wayne County zoning map to rezonate fifty-nine point six-four acres from residential agriculture, uh, twenty RA twenty to airport industry A one, the property owned by Lane Farms Incorporated is located in Indian Springs Township at twenty-two fifty-three Bill Lane Boulevard, Dudley, North Carolina, in a parcel number, so at this time, uh, we are in a public hearing, and, uh, Mr. Barry Gray is here, uh, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is, it's mentioned a rezoning request from RA twenty to Airport Industry, uh, this is for fifty-nine acres on Bill Lane Boulevard, it's mentioned, it's on the north side of Bill Lane Boulevard, if you're familiar with the area, right there at the bridge, at the Neuse River, uh, there is a shooting range just to the west, uh, of this, uh, this area of rezoning, um, this rezoning will be actually just east of that, uh, we'll we'll not include that, uh, that shooting range area. Uh, there is a, to the west, you can see just on the far left of the screen, you can see an existing, um, borrow pit or sand pit, uh, gonna be a new proposed pit over here on the east, however, with this rezoning, it is what we call a straight rezoning, which means any use is viable within that district, uh, within that, uh, within the zoning area if approved. We have sent this to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base for their comments, uh, we did receive their comments back, uh, they said they had no issues with the request, uh, we have advertised this hearing, we've advertised in a newspaper twice, uh, we have, uh, posted the property with a sign and sent letters to adjacent property owners as well. Uh, the planning board has reviewed this request, and they do recommend approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, and the applicant is also present as well.
Should the commissioners have any question? Do we, it's a, do we have anyone here that wants to speak during this public, um, hearing? Do you know anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just, I do have one question for Barry, and I think he just clarified just a minute ago, uh, the adjacent property, a little bit further to the east, it's already being used in it for, for mining or sand removal or whatever?
That's right. Yes, sir.
It's already been used for that, so basically, what what they want to do is just expand operation over to this?
That's right, yes, sir. There is an existing, um, sand mine, uh, adjacent to this, yes, sir.
Do we have to close the public hearing before the motion makes?
Yeah.
That's what, do we? You wanna ask Mr. Lane? Mr. Lane, do you want, do you wanna speak, sir?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to answer any questions I can, it's, um, I bet the best thing to say about it, there's a, a, a pit right beside it on the same track of land, just, we bought it from two different people. Um, y'all got a lot of that dirt at the jet port, it was the material they needed to build that stuff in the back that was real low and real soft, um, Deacon Jones Auto Models have all been built out of it, uh, the Walmart on Highway seventy and eleven in that corner was built out of it, and right now, we're building the office space for deep power, so it's good material, and when you're doing work, you got to have the right material to start your foundation on, and it's, um, it's good. Any questions?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Okay, uh, so we have no one else to, um, Carol, to speak? Okay, so, uh, the public hearing is closed at this time, uh, does the Board of Commissioners have a preference?
I say maybe we, uh, uh, grant the, their request and, uh, move forward with this, and that's in form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, uh, to accept the, uh, proposed amendment to the Wayne County zoning map as presented, uh, Mr. Kam, is there any comments? Mr. Kamarti, can you hear me okay?
I hear you fine.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor, uh, is there any comments from any commissioners? Uh, all in, all in favor of, uh, the proposed amendment to the Wayne County zoning map as presented, uh, say, uh, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
All opposed, no? Okay, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Honeycutt?
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I do have, uh, Aaron Stryker and also Ken Stern here, uh, with Emergency Services and, um, also the Health Department to, if you have any questions or need an update on what's going on with COVID nineteen within the county, and we had some good discussion earlier, uh, but they were are here, if you need to answer or ask any questions, and I'll get to it right quick.
You're on. Sit on the hot seat.
Thank you, guys, for being here, we appreciate it.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Morning.
Hey.
Just wanna give you a, uh, quick update on the numbers so far in, uh, Wayne County. As of this morning, we have five hundred and sixty-nine, uh, COVID nineteen cases, uh, of those, four hundred and eighty-six are in, uh, congregate living facilities, so about eighty-five percent of our total cases are either in, uh, News Corrections or in, uh, long-term care facilities.
How many of those from News Correctional?
Uh, there's four hundred and fifty-eight inmates by our count.
Okay.
At News Corrections, uh, tested positive.
Thank you.
I can ask you outside earlier, were you able to comment on the staff and how it's impacted staff?
They, uh, tested all their staff, they started Friday, um, and we had sent some of our, uh, Health Department staff some lab techs, as well as a nurse, to go help assist with those, that testing of their staff, two hundred and fifty staff, uh, they tested most of them on Friday, and then they finished up, uh, without our assistance over the weekend, as the staff come in, uh, to work on their shift, and they went ahead and tested them, uh, based on the report I got out of our NC Ed's program, that there's eighteen of those that had, uh, tested positive, uh, as far as the staff goes, and those are all being isolated at home.
So they're no longer going back and forth?
No.
Isolated at home?
Isolated at home, fourteen days.
Well, these people were asymptomatic, or do you know that?
Um, Division of Public Safety is reporting that, uh, majority of those tested were asymptomatic or were without symptoms.
Let's get a little bit more deeper in the weeds here, when you say the majority of that, I've heard as many as ninety-five percent or ninety-eight percent had no symptoms.
That is correct.
That is correct.
That is what DPS had reported, yes.
Do understand, we're having a public relations nightmare, because the reports, and the news media sensationalize it, they are looking at Wayne County as being a hotbed of this, almost like we're just spreading amongst ourselves like I don't know what, we are the fourth now largest county testing positive of coronavirus, and it's a real issue, uh, and I know Public Affairs has worked hard to try to let people know that a lot of this is coming from the prison.
Right.
But whatever we're doing, we we're gonna have to adjust it, uh, because there's fear in our community, there is, and you can, and rightly so, if you would think that all of a sudden, you've got almost the same number as Wake County in Wayne County, you say, my goodness, what in the world's happening here?
And tha- and that's why we try to stay as transparent as possible and let people know that the majority, vast majority of these cases are in long-term-
I understand, but we're gonna even have to be more transparent, and as an example, if in fact ninety, if Department of Prisons Correction is reporting ninety-eight percent of those inmates were asymptomatic, we we need to report that, because people need to know that, uh, and emphasizing, as you did right here, where if, basically, if you've got four hundred and eighty-six are either in a nursing facility, I'm, what'd you call
Long-term Care Facility?
A long-term care facility, um, or in the prison, then you're only talking about eighty-three now that's in the population.
Correct.
And out of the eighty-three, we've determined, I think the last count I saw was eight had recovered?
Estimated eighteen.
What, eighteen?
Yeah, we updated that yesterday afternoon.
Oh, did you?
And that's an estimate based on, uh, when their case was entered into NC Ed's, and we look at the fourteen-day, um, uh, incubation period, then we, as, then we contact those positives and ask them about their symptoms and how long they've been without a fever and those kind of things, to make an estimate on whether or not they have recovered, they're not being retested, but the, uh, CDC guidance is if they go seventy-two hours without a fever, without the assistance of fever-reducing medications, and the other symptoms have subsided, that they're considered recovered.
But you see, what we're talking about now is rather than five hundred and sixty-nine, we're talking about sixty-five.
Yeah, well, some of those, some of those recovers are in long-term care facilities or at the News-
Oh, okay, all right, well, okay.
Mr. Chairman, but if you, uh, excuse me, if you take, if you take the five sixty-nine and just take out the four fifty-eight from News Correctional, you're still looking at a hundred and eleven is our actual number in our county.
Yeah, some of those are in long-term care facilities.
Well, that's okay, we can include those, but we don't have a zero control over the News Correctional.
We don't, but since that, News Corrections are located in Wayne County, those numbers are ours according to the state, and that's-
Yeah, but we need to change that, because what's happened is we're getting calls from from residents and citizens that are saying they think that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners run, uh, News Correctional, that's what a lot of people in our county think, that's why we have talked about it earlier, we need to specify somewhere in our reporting that we specify the number that's in our county, the number, we need to separate this out, uh, specify the number in the county, and then the number at News Correctional.
And that's what we're doing on our dashboard at the county website.
Okay, all right.
Every day.
Well, of course, the total, the population at News Correctional?
Yeah.
Um, there's approximately, I don't know exactly, approximately seven hundred inmates, and all of them have been tested, along with two hundred and fifty staff.
Well, they did do a very good job in regards to social distancing if they have that percentage of the seven hundred that's-
It's kinda difficult, and and the best way to reduce the number of cases is to stop testing. They tested everybody, and, uh, so you're gonna get, uh, spike in cases.
Well, he told me outside, he said, but don't worry, like, and they're, all the beds are in bunks.
Mr. Chairman.
Like an arm, army, you know, facility.
The way it's set up out there-
It's really hard to keep them apart, sure, yeah.
It's bunk beds.
Mr. Kamarti?
Yes, I I would like to ask, uh, this question of, of one of the, uh, gentlemen there, uh, how many staff members at the Correctional, uh, at News Correctional is coming back into the community every day, how many? What, what's the percent of, what is the number of, of, uh, folk coming in and out of the, back into the larger community every day, what's that number?
Well, that would be, uh, all two hundred and fifty of their staff, because I don't think any of them live on, live at News Corrections, but, uh, uh, those that have been tested positive, which was the eighteen, the number that I have, are all being isolated at home, so they're not going back and forth.
And so, a- and this is my follow-up then, is this testing of the staff on a weekly basis, daily basis, monthly basis, or what?
It was just a one-time test of all staff, and that is true, they can go out in the community and-
A one-time testing of all staff, so if that was done two weeks ago or a month ago, you really don't have any data on who may be, uh, positive as we speak?
You're absolutely correct.
I I just wanted our fellow commissioners to hear that said, because I I hear some concerns, but the, my concern is, the one that I just mentioned, was how many potential people are coming back into the community every day, they could, they could be carrying the virus, that's, that, that's all my concern, thank you.
Now, the question, uh, you said it's two hundred and fifty staff members out there, okay, uh, it was been on, it's been on the news, several channels, did they bring staff in from, say, the Johnson County facility that's been closed, how many, how many, uh, how many other staff members are they bringing in above this two hundred and fifty, or is that included in this two fifty?
That's not included in that two fifty, that two fifty is those employed at News Corrections, how many other staff are bringing in to support News, I have no idea, that's kind of a, uh, Division of Prisons decision, and they haven't published on that.
And another question that I've been asking, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not throwing y'all on the book, because you just, you giving us the information, but I, but I, but I'm also, had a couple of calls, you know, if they're bringing staff in from the, from the Johnson County facility that have closed, where did those inmates go? And I know they went to other facilities, and, you know, how many came to-
And I know they went to other facilities and, you know, how many came to news or did any come to news or, I mean, you know.
From what I understand, none came to the news. They went to other facilities in other parts of the state, but not to news corrections.
And again, that's one of the, you know, as we talked about earlier, we've got a conference call that we're trying to get with the Department of Corrections. And we really need to get some of these questions answered and the DOC needs to tell us their plan and what they plan to do moving forward. And because we are getting those questions and as Commissioner or Chairman Mayo said, is a lot of people think that Wayne County, when they think corrections, they're thinking our jail. And it's not our jail, it is a state correctional facility that we have absolutely, we're kind of working through them. But again, as Ken said, that it does affect our numbers because they're also listed, you know, when we count census numbers, they're our numbers when we count census numbers as well. So that's why they are added to our COVID list as positives.
Man, you had a conversation yesterday, you know, a lot of the questions I asked you yesterday have been asked today. And I think one of the clarifications is going to be, when y'all have that call, you know, try to, try to get some of those answers so we can, so we can give it to the citizens here in Wayne County. I mean, they're not, they're not, they're not complaining, they're just concerned.
They're scared, they're.
You know, and we've got businesses that do business out there, their concern is, and there's several of them. Their concern is, is those employees coming into their business, they don't want to be a part of spreading it and also they're concerned about their employees. I mean, it's, you know, it's just a never-ending thing.
And we would like to, sorry to interrupt, we'd like to ask also if you have questions, specific questions that you are hearing as well that you want to make sure that we ask. Just please let us know, you can either email or call me or just let me know. We'll make sure that those specific questions are asked when we do have that discussion with.
Mr. Chairman, see, there are two problems here. The first one is, let's try to reach out to whoever is keeping up with the data and reporting it. And segregate out those long care facilities and prisons. Because we're not the only counties having this problem. If you've got a confined facility. Undoubtedly, the opportunity is greater there of spread than it would be out here in the general community. Like you were saying, they've got double bunks side by side, three foot apart. Undoubtedly, the close proximity is going to cause the spread even greater. So we would ask that as we're talking with whoever that's keeping up with the data, to report it separately rather than just lumping it all together.
On DHHS's website, on their dashboard, they do break that down, they have a map that of course gives the total cases. But they've also got tabs on there where you can look at the total outbreaks in congregate living facilities, in corrections facilities. And how many positive cases and it lists by county and how many they have.
Well, I haven't seen that, see, everybody's just looking.
They're looking at the total, don't they?
Yeah.
That information not getting to the news media, that's what we're talking about.
The news media uses what information that they create.
You know, that link is on our website as well.
Yeah.
Well, just reach out and try to get them to change the first responses that they're putting out. Number two. In everybody's plan of opening up businesses again and putting people back to work, it is based upon, as I recall, 14 days of decline. And you're never going to have 14 days of decline if you're going to test, because the more, you're right, you said it earlier. The more you test, the more you find, because they're asymptomatic. Hell, I could have it today, I mean, you know, I'm just saying with that in mind, the more you test, the more you're going to find have the coronavirus. So therefore, every day that goes by that they're testing these facilities where there's a better opportunity of the spread. There's an increase that will continue, there'll never be a time that you have 14 days without it almost. We can go from now till November. And there's the other problem. And that is, when are we going to recognize that we're going to, we can't sustain closing down the entire economy? We can't, it's not sustainable, period. It's one thing for us to have done it for a month. And if you recall, we all started this, why? So that our medical facilities, our hospitals would not be overrun. We've accomplished that, we've accomplished that. But now we've moved the goalposts now to where we're saying 14 days without an increase, well, I don't know when that's ever going to happen. So this cannot be the norm of going into depression economically over this. So I'm very, very concerned about it. So anything we can do to segregate out the data on the reports that gives a more realistic numbers would be helpful, would be very helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Let's make the water real muddy.
I think I've already done that.
I've heard, I've heard nothing far as the hospital at Cherry. I mean, what, do they have cases? I mean, that's been the best kept secret and, I mean, I hadn't even heard it mentioned.
I know of one case of an employee there, but they're, they lived outside of Wayne County. So they were isolated outside of Wayne County, so they weren't on our numbers. But I haven't heard any reports of any other staff or patients at Cherry Hospital.
Were they testing?
That I don't know. They may be, they may be following the CDC guidance and testing those that are symptomatic.
Well, from my understanding, the hospital is vacant almost and losing money and over fees.
Yep.
So they want to get back to operation, I'm sure is what.
They're getting, they're getting some well-deserved vacation.
It's just not, it's just not this hospital, it's all regional hospitals are really being hit hard. The inability to do elective surgeries, which is where the money comes. That's got to, that's got to come back as soon as possible. With, of course, the precautions that could need to take place. But I was just trying to read her updated notes, but anyway. They are, we are having furloughs as we speak out and they're our hospital. I hate it.
Okay. Anything else for me?
Yeah.
I think we beat y'all up for it. Aaron hadn't had anything to say.
I know, yeah, the prison has everybody's concerns right now, but some good news, we are starting to see some personal protective equipment starting to trickle in. Our first priority is still the hospital and our EMS staff to make sure they have everything they need because they're going to be the ones that are going to be treating these patients. We have received enough in, we were able to get some of our first responders in Goldsboro and mount all of some extra PPE. As you all know, spring break was last week and the schools took a break off from feeding. But we were able to work with the Salvation Army to put together a feeding plan to cover that week, that was a very great success. So still waiting to hear back the final details from the Salvation Army. Silver lining for this is going forward for other disasters, we'll be able to modify the plan that Salvation Army has created to cover feeding needs for future disasters. We're still running the County Information Center out of our EOC right now. Those calls have dwindled down. The dashboard that Public Affairs has been put together is constantly changing and updating, so we're getting good feedback, good feedback from that, excuse me. Well, that's just kind of a rundown of what we had going on lately. It's, the biggest concern still is that PPE and getting that equipment in so we can try to get as much as possible, just for however long it lasts.
I'm hoping that you are perfecting the food lines. Because we may all be in that in a few months if we don't come to our senses and open this deck of economy back up.
As Aaron said, there is a huge thanks to the Chamber and also to the Salvation Army and also to Aaron and his staff for what they did last week and.
When this is eventually done, the county will come out with some stronger emergency plans to cover more, more local solutions, less reliance on outside entities. So not that we're going to stop asking for help when we need it, but having plans in place where we're relying on Salvation Army, United Way, Chamber of Commerce, local businesses. So that way we can self-sustain, not just during this disaster, but any other disaster moving forward. And we are, what, middle of April now, hurricane season does start June 1st, so we have that to look forward to as well.
Good news.
It's alright, I was four weeks on the job and we had Dorian, so I think we're a little better prepared this time around.
Will you meet with, you meet with the prison system, are you, Department of Corrections?
We have not yet, but yes, we have that, we have that call scheduled.
Please share our concerns and with them, you know, it's not their fault, but.
Yes.
Well, we need to work together if you'll do that.
Yes, sir, and that's why if you had any concerns, you can get to County Manager of Economy. We're also having county officials, hospital officials and North Carolina Emergency Management are all invited to that call.
And you mentioned some of it, Aaron. There's some unsung heroes in this county right now. I mean, you know, you've, and you've mentioned some of them, I mean, like, a lot of the restaurants. I mean, it's phenomenal the stories that I'm hearing, how they stepped up. I mean, you know, this, this, they're not doing it to get a pat on the back, but still again, it's phenomenal to some of the things that they have done. You know, they're already struggling anyhow because of their business being off. But to step up and do some of the things that some of the businesses in Wayne County has done and all over the state far as that goes. But I'm just so proud of the ones in Wayne County that has stepped up to, with his calls to do what they're doing.
You know, it's amazing when customers search out truck drivers and big trucks, trailers coming in, knowing they're bringing in supplies, so.
Yeah.
And I mean, those guys have really worked hard and you know all about that.
Yeah, I mean, that, when I was driving, it just didn't happen.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like after, over the weekend, up at Burlington, up close to Hall River in Burlington. The state truck scales up there, they were bringing all trucks in, but they won't weigh them, they were feeding them. I mean, I mean, the things, when I was driving, things just didn't happen that way.
Well, I had, I had the opportunity Friday to see what Wayne County is all about. And of course, a lot of people in Wayne County has been discussed, have stepped up to the plate. But I went out to Meadow Lane where volunteers, including the Salvation Army, were giving out meals. And that's, that is a perfect example of the best of the best of Wayne County. We have a lot that have stepped up to the plate. Volunteers from churches, all types of organizations are jumping in here to make this just as easy as possible. It ain't going to be easy, but my goodness, businesses have stepped up, people have stepped up. But while I was there at Meadow Lane, the people would drive up, they would give them every how many meals they needed, it was bagged. And I'm telling you, it was a lot busier than what I thought it would be. Commissioner Doherty, you're right. We, we have a lot of people in this county that are already struggling or hurting for food. It's going to get worse if we don't get this economy cranked back up under guidelines that we're suggesting. So I tell you, if you want to see, Mr. Daycock, all of us commissioners, there's so many that have stepped up in this county. That it does make a difference to the, to the most needy people in our county. We have still a lot of needs. We still have people that are on public assistance. We still have all these needs, food stamps, all these things. This coronavirus has made it worse and not better. So I was going to save this till my comments time, but Aaron, since she brought up the meals and so forth, I really wanted to expand on this. That if you, all you got to do is walk outside of this courthouse or inside and you see what really this county is all about. You see exactly why we do what we do. And we will come out stronger and better than ever before, we always do, don't we? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I have some more questions for Mr. Stern here? I want to flip the tables here just a bit.
Okay.
I want to take everybody back to when this was first announced that we had an issue with Corona. And at that time, if everybody will recall, there was no known treatment for it. One. And number two, it was so serious that if you got it, you very likely were going to be on a ventilator and everybody had to have all these ventilators. In fact, we needed millions of ventilators. Now, I want everybody to kind of go back and remember a couple of months ago. Since that time, and I may be totally wrong what I'm about to say, and if so, please correct me. Today, today we have a treatment, we have treatments, several treatments that are very successful in treating coronavirus. Am I correct or not?
They have a few drugs they considered promising to treat the symptoms, yes, but generally they're just treating the symptoms.
Well, then I must be getting totally different information because the information I'm getting and I hear from the news media. And by the way, they like to really sensationalize this. And that is, that the overwhelming number of people that actually have symptoms, not the asymptomatic, but have symptoms. That they, and I was corrected on this, they're not cured.
They're recovered.
But they have a, recovered, they have a positive outcome.
Correct.
Overwhelmingly. We need to know and the public needs to know what the recovery rate is. What is the treatment? Because the fear out there, over the last two months, it's just been brow-beating out there is, oh my goodness, this is worse than the plague. If you get it, you might as well go ahead and get your affairs in order. It's not to that extent. And we have got to start the process of giving the other side of the coin. We've got to start talking about the fact that if you have symptoms, how many of those people that have symptoms actually are hospitalized? If you're hospitalized, how many of those actually have a positive outcome? How many of those are actually have the worst-case scenario and actually a fatality? I would request that we try as best we can to put things in perspective, is what I'm trying to say, if that makes any sense.
I understand what you're saying, you know, if you're an individual that's over 65 or otherwise unhealthy and have underlying health conditions. Then the scenario is a lot different for the average healthy member of the public, which will more than likely recover within a couple of weeks, but so.
But let me qualify just what you said. You see, to the average guy, I'm not a medical doctor, because so when you say underlying medical conditions. My understanding is not a matter of just the fact that you're sickly. It's a matter in which you've got some serious medical conditions, you've got a real problem with your heart, with your lungs, with your liver. In other words, you've got real serious conditions here that prevent you from fighting off the coronavirus, am I correct in that?
Those folks are high-risk, yes.
But you see, if you put it in terms of underlying health conditions, we all have underlying health conditions.
Yeah, and we're all elderly.
You what?
We're all elderly.
And we're all elderly, but it's not that, it is serious health conditions from what I'm hearing and reading. So I think that, I really do see that there was a general concern about the population in general. And I understand that, but they went too far. They, they inflamed it, they, they took the underlying health conditions and they weren't specific. If you've got a serious, serious health condition, then you better stay home, you better stay out of the public. But to say underlying health conditions, I dare say just about everybody in this room has underlying health conditions. So I'm just saying, it needs to be phrased differently to be a little bit more specific. I'll hush. Any other? Thank you, Mr. Stern.
Any other question? Okay, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Aaron, by the way, thanks for the hand.
I like Chris Noyes.
Oh, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Camardi.
This is to the director who was.
Uh, to, this is to, uh, the, the director who was just, uh, uh, maybe giving the best answer that he could to Mr. Dougherty. I would also like for, for them, I, I think the two gentlemen standing there to, uh, and, and I'm not saying put together a confidential letter, but at least pass this along to our county manager, county manager, let him say it out there as appropriate. To wade through some of this missing information, now, Mr. Dougherty, and, and Mr. Dougherty, this is, this is just my opinion. I, I think what I hear you, uh, sort of expounding is the position that our president has taken. Now, I just want you also to count the heads that have died, if, if, if these people were dying in New York and New Jersey, uh, i- i- they may have the great underlying conditions, but you also listen to the news, and there are people who have come down with the virus and died, who seem to be perfectly healthy. So, I think there's just enough about this thing that we simply do not know, so that we should not categorically say that, well, this side is inflaming or this side is calming down, because anytime you listen to three different networks, and they're all repeating the same thing, it does sound like that they could be quote-unquote inflaming it. They are, but they are just repeating what has been said by someone else. And, and, uh, you, unless it's one of those doctors who has studied this thing, they don't really know exactly what to tell us. So, for Wayne County, for Wayne County, I would like for, for our, uh, personnel over here, uh, uh, to look as deep into the truth and share that with us, so that we will know closer to what the truth is versus speculation. Because I, I, I honestly have seen too much speculation on both sides. And, and I'll add one more thing to us coming out of, uh, spacing and all that to back into a completely open, uh, business arrangement. I certainly wanna see us move, open our businesses back up in a controlled fashion, but I would want to see our county leadership look at closely what businesses that could be open that would not add to our people going back out and clustering together. Now, for one, I'm trying to take care of how I see for myself. Seven-three years old, I have some things that are not called, I don't think they're called underlying conditions, but I'm not playing Russian roulette either. I, I don't think we know enough about this whole business to say, uh, this is a business that I feel comfortable going in, or that's the one that I wanna stay away from. But, uh, I would just encourage our leadership to, 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 to do the, to be as transparent as possible, but try to look inside of what you hear, uh, from the news media, and then on the other side from our president, and try to see if you can let us know what the real truth is. Thank you.
Any other, uh, any other comments? Okay, uh, Mr. Honecker.
Uh, I, I have nothing else, and I appreciate Ken and also Aaron being here as well. Just wanted, one thing I did wanna mention, there is some really good work done, being done at the Chamber as far as small businesses, and if we do have small businesses that are out there that are struggling, there's a lot of resources that are available at Wayne Community College with Craig Foote, Mark Pope is a great resource, and also Kate Daniels at the Chamber. So, there's a lot of resources, a lot of programs out there for our small businesses, and I would encourage anybody that has that need to please either contact the Chamber, the Community College, or WCDAs, and, and that is a great place to start. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next, we have Board of Commissioners' committee reports and comments. Mr. Kamarti, do you have any comments you'd like to make today?
No other comments, no other comments, uh, uh, Mr. Chairperson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kamarti, uh, Mr. Acock.
Yes, sir, just a couple. Uh, I think as Carol told us earlier, uh, last week was, uh, 911, or our call-takers week, but we're gonna do it this week in Wayne County, and I just, as I'd said earlier, I want to thank all of our people, all of OES, but you know, our, uh, our 911 telecommunications, uh, when an emergency comes in, they are not the first ones to get to those people that need help, but they are the first one to talk to them. And, and we've got some, we've got some professionals. Uh, we may stump our toe once in a while, but take it all in all, we are very blessed to have the call-takers that we have. And, uh, they're getting extra training now, it's gonna, it's gonna get better. But again, I just want to thank all of them, and, and again, all the first responders. And, uh, this past Saturday, I don't know how many volunteer fire departments participated, but I know Nahana and Little River, uh, did, and I think Sawston did, and it might have been some others, but they just got out with some of their trucks and rode through the communities, through the subdivisions, just showing the support that, that they appreciate from all of the people following orders and staying home and, and doing what they're supposed to be, supposed to be doing. And, uh, I thought that was a great gesture for them to get out and, and take the time, and I know, I know Little River and Nahana stayed out for about four hours. They, they went in all the subdivisions and all, and, uh, the turnout was actually better than what they thought it was gonna be far as people coming out and the kids and all to see the fire trucks go by. And like I say, I know Little River and Nahana did, and I think Sawston did, and might have been some other departments in the county, I don't know. But, uh, I just want to thank them and thank them for their service, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Dougherty, you have any comment?
Yes, uh, I do. I, uh, would just encourage people to reach out to their, uh, to the governor's office, also to their elected officials, and ask them to arrive at a realistic plan with safeguards in place that reopens North Carolina. Uh, I see South Carolina opening up, I see Georgia opening up, I see Tennessee. We, we are in a situation that cannot be sustained. As someone told me the other day, I, the coronavirus has not, has affected America more in the last six weeks and changed our freedoms, uh, the way we live every day. There's been a greater change in the last six weeks than it has in the last 60 years. We've got to get back to recognizing that it's not gonna do any of us any good to have economic devastation. We've got to find a, a compromise. I think the plan that they have currently where you can go to the grocery store, and go to Lowe's, you can go to Walmart, you can go to these big-box stores, but you're limited in regards to practicing social distancing. Uh, they, they've got to incorporate one-way aisles shopping. Uh, there's a limitation on the number of people that in fact can be within such square footage. I think it's time that we look at some realistic opportunities to allow independent small businessmen to reopen and bring their, their, uh, employees back. Do recognize that the PPP plan, the, that's run out of money now, that, that entire amount, uh, uh, was designed to keep people working, but if the businesses are not open, what good is the employees? You, you've got to, we've got to find a way to open up the government, I mean, the, the businesses. Has it affected our budget? Sure it has, but we'll deal with that down the road. Right now, we've got to get somehow or another a realistic plan to reopen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
What he said did, uh.
Mr. Chairman.
And I've already said enough today anyway, so that's, that's all I got to say.
Okay. Mr. Kamarti?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kamarti?
Uh, I, I would just like to, uh, to congratulate Mr. Dougherty. I, I think his final statement, I believe reflects what we all want. I, I, I think his final statement reflects what we all want. Uh, and, and I, I think maybe he may hit a post-up when he opened up. We need to call and talk to our legislators on both sides, both sides of the aisle, and, 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 uh, someone who may be able to get through a telephone call to the governor to, to, to really express categorically what Mr. Dougherty is saying, because i- if, if I, as I listen to all this, it, it could be 18 months to two years before there's really a vaccine. We all know we can't wait for that long, but I would wanna say to the public who, the public who's over 70 years old, over 65, just be careful about where you're going and who you're interacting with, and, uh, uh, and, and we do need to move forward, but we need to move forward as cautiously as I think Mr. Dougherty's final comments were. And I think we can all agree with that position, Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kamarti. Well, I guess, yes, Mr. Honecker.
Could we go into closed session for the same reasons that we went in closed session earlier today?
Yeah, I was gonna do my comment.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, no, I thought you, I'm sorry. I apologize.
You gonna cut, you gonna cut me off?
No, sir, no, sir, no, 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 sir, I'm sorry.
That's okay, yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Just a couple, most, most everything has been said, but, um, I wanna say that the final result of us coming through all this virus thing, all the results and the rebound of this economy, I think reflects on what has just been put on the, the entrances to our courthouse and in our commission room, right above us, it says, "In God We Trust." That's new to the public, I want the public to understand. This county commissioner board believes in this statement right here, "In God We Trust." That's what we've been doing for all of these years. That's one, that's the only reason that we will come through this pandemic, and we will survive, and we will be better than we were before, because you can't, you can't grow if you're on a mountaintop all the time. God knows that we have to go into a valley once in a while in order to appreciate what we have. My daddy used to say that. He said, "Hey, I'm a sharecropper daddy, you know?" He said, "Well, hey, you gotta keep in mind, one of these days, you're gonna wish I could be a sharecropper." And he's right, you gotta appreciate where you are and what you have. So, having said that, um, I've seen the best of the best in our county, I continue to see it, and there's no doubt in my mind, we're going to survive. I think the question we all have, we gotta get this thing cracking, we gotta get it moving. So, that's all I have to say. We, okay, we, uh, we have a motion to go into closed session?
Salute.
Okay, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're, closed session, thank you, Mr. Kamarti. All right, we're staying right here, guys. Okay, we're, we're back, uh, in open session now, uh, at a closed session.
Um, hit, um, end call on that, 'cause we're, he doesn't need that now because it comes through speakers.
I'm sorry.
You see, done, okay.
Are you there, Mr. Kamarti?
Now you're talking to the microphone.
Okay, all right, uh, so we're, we're back out of closed session into our regular, regular session at this time. We have anything before the commission board?
Yes, we want to make a motion to, uh, send the, uh, letter to the governor, uh, and authorize the chairman to execute for the, for the, for the board.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, to approve the, the revised, uh, letter to the governor, as was read by our county manager a few minutes ago. All in favor, uh, say yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, Mr. Kamarti, uh, motion carries unanimous. Okay? All right, we're, we're all set on our, we just, we just did all that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Honecker, so, is there anything else to come before the commission board today? Anyone have anything? Mr. Mr. Yeah, we will, yeah. Okay, I wanna remind the commissioners, Mr. Kamarti, that we're gonna, I'm calling us into recess at this time until 2 o'clock this afternoon, when we, we reconvene, and we will interview the candidates that we have, three candidates for the District 3 vacant seat.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before you recess, we're not asking any questions, they're just going to present their qualifications to us, is that correct?
That is correct, we, we are not gonna ask any questions, uh, they're gonna do a presentation, and then we'll decide from there.
And that, ten minutes per decision.
I understand, I understand that.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah, well, about 10 minutes.
And Mr. Kamarti, you will dial same number, same access codes at 2 o'clock. I, my recommendation would be for you to do that somewhere around 5 to 10 minutes prior to 2 o'clock, so that we can make certain that you're connected.
I will, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Also, I wanna remind the commissioners that we, we have a meeting on April the 28th, a special call meeting to do our announcement for.
Not a special call, no, it's a recess.
I'm sorry, we're gonna recess it, but it's not a normal meeting, but we're gonna recess anyway.
Yes.
All right, sorry about that. So, I just wanna remind the commissioners that we're not making a decision today, but we will by the 28th. At this time, I declare us in recess until 2 o'clock. Thank you. Good afternoon, I wanna welcome you back to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners from our recess from this morning. We're con, we're convening today to, uh, interview, uh, three candidates for the vacant seat for Commissioner, uh, John Bell, and, uh, Commissioner Bell, uh, as you remember, served on this board almost 20 years, uh, and there's no doubt that he will greatly be missed, and already is, now and in the years to come. But we're here today to do what we have to do. We have to appoint, or at least listen to three candidates that, uh, for this District 3 seat. I also like to remind everyone that this meeting will be recessed until April the 28th. Uh, we will not make an announcement of who we pick of these three candidates until April the 28th. So, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our county manager, Mr. Craig Honecker.
Mr. Chairman first.
Is Mr. Kamarti on? Yeah, Mr. Kamarti.
I'm here, I'm, I'm here, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I, I left you out, I, I didn't mean to, okay, we're good.
I'm here.
All right, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, we do have three candidates that have applied for the position in time, uh, who have submitted both a statement of why they would like to serve as well as a resume, and we will be doing this in the order in which the applications were received. Uh, the first will be Mr. Foster, the second will be Mr. Worrell, and the third will be Mr. Coley. So, we have, uh, allowed up to 10 minutes, uh, per candidate, uh, for anything that they would like for the board to be informed of uh, with respect to their candidacy for this position.
Okay, I'd, I'd also like to say, don't forget that we agreed we're not gonna ask any questions during this interview. So, uh, I just wanna remind the commissioners that. Okay, Mr. Honecker? Okay, Mr. Haneket?
Okay. And, um, first will be Mr. Foster.
Clark, you got any music?
Some music.
I'm about to take a, I'm about to take a nap here, folks.
I'm gonna go to sleep in my chair at the house after I'm done.
Joyce woke me up.
Oh, right, 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 right here.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Uh, Mr. Foster, welcome. Uh, again, we appreciate your interest in the District 3, uh, position. Um, again, uh, we do have Commissioner Kamarti is on the phone, uh, he is doing it, uh, via the, uh, conference call. And, uh, well, how we're doing this is since you were the first person to apply for the position, we're going in that order. Uh, you'll have up to 10 minutes to say anything that you would like to, to the board about your candidacy. And I, the board is not going to be asking any questions, but anything you would like to say and, and to support your candidacy in the next 10 minutes, please do.
All right, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen, how you doing?
Good.
All right, thank you for this opportunity, first and foremost.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening. That's a little weird. Um, yes, um, recently, um, we had an election in March, um, with the primary. Uh, we had four candidates in District 3 running. Um, I, people chose, um, me to represent them through that primary. Also, the Democratic Party, um, they also chose me to represent them here for Mr. Bell's seat. To be able to do that will be an honor. You know, Mr. Bell, his legacy, um, the things that he accomplished while in this seat, just as an individual outside of this seat, are just outstanding. Um, I don't know if I could ever live up to that, but I would try my best. Also, um, I think that, you know, being the, the person that the people chose, it's, it's important for me to, to represent them because, you know, we have six different districts and each district has a representative. And wi- within those districts, you know, you, you're supposed to do what's best for the people in the, in that district, but also you have to do what's best for the people in Wayne County. And I think that's the most important thing collectively, to all work together to do what's best for entire Wayne County. I don't know all the goals and what the plans are for the county. Um, I was a city councilman for four years, mayor pro temp for a year. I know a lot of the city goals, I know the strategic plan for the city. I don't know the strategic plan for the county, I don't know if you guys have one. Uh, I honestly don't know, but if you do, I would look forward to working with each and every last one of you on that, moving forward to try to grow Wayne County, you know? Um, I always go back to when I was growing up in the 90s, 80s and 90s and how the industry and everything was moving in Wayne County, the schools, everything, it was just, it was a different field, you know? And I don't know if we can ever repeat that, but I would like to get back to that. I would like to get back to seeing Wayne County grow that way, that growth, that, the industry, the schools, everything, working together to just make the county better. You know, I, I think we, we've done a lot of amazing things, but I think we still have a lot of amazing things to do. Um, while I'm here, I was, I would also like to address my, you know, right now I'm dealing with a resident residency issue with the board of elections, I'd like to address that. Um, I think I'll be fine through that. Uh, Mr. Daultrey himself had went through an issue, he came out fine, I think I'll be fine too, also. And, trying to think of any other points. That's really about it, I think, that I have to say. Like I said, once again, it's just, it would be an honor. I grew up in Mr. Bell's son's church, Mount Zion, so I've watched him for years of my life, you know, I lived in the same community as him. I ran the track right behind his house, so I've watched him for majority of my life and, and he's just an amazing, he's an amazing man. His family, an amazing family, you know, and I would love to be able to represent him the, the rest of his tenure, the rest of his tenure, um, from now until November. So, I thank you guys for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mr. Adrian Worrell. Yes, sir.
They're handheld computers now.
Are you still there, Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, we're still here, uh, we'll wait for Mr. Worrell to come in from the jury room.
Oh, all right, okay, I'll just, I was, I knew that should be taking place, I just want to make, just tap in to make sure we're still good and live.
Yeah. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what kind of transportation we're using to get him here.
Okay.
We, we've recorded you?
I think so, I think so.
We've recorded you? So, I better watch what I say, huh?
Mr. Worrell, thank you for coming today. Uh, we appreciate your time and your interest in the District 3, uh, seat. Uh, do want to let you know that Commissioner Kamarti is on the phone. Uh, he is doing it via a conference call, so, uh, we appreciate Ed being here as well. Uh, but you're the second person.
Good afternoon, good afternoon.
Yeah. Uh, you're the second person on our, our list today, as your application came in second, and we would like to give you up to 10 minutes to talk to the board and tell them anything that you would like for them to know.
Okay, all right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Adrian Worrell, applicant for District 3 vacancy. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself and express why you should choose me to fill the vacancy. I'm a lifelong resident of Wayne County and educated in the Wayne County schools. I graduated in 1987 from Eastern Wayne High School. I am married to Selena Worrell. My wife, Selena, and our, and our children were educated in the Wayne County schools. Selena is a former educator, she taught math at Eastern Wayne High School. My only time that, that I lived outside of Goldsboro was through the military with the United States Navy. I was stationed in NAS Miramar, San Diego, California. I am a service-disabled veteran and I received an honorable discharge with many letters of accommodation and awards and threw my stay with the, uh, US Navy. Upon my return to North Carolina, I worked for the Department of Corrections and the Wayne County Public Schools. In 1997, I started Worrell Contracting, which became Worrell Contracting, Inc. in 1991. I am a licensed highway general contractor as well as a licensed highway water and sewer contractor. I'm a licensed North Carolina landscape contractor. I'm a licensed pesticide applicator for North Carolina, Virginia, and Florida. During this time as a CEO of Worrell Contracting, I've gained extensive experience as a visionary and a leader. On a daily basis, I work with diverse group of employees and other stakeholders. I have an excellent track record for managing the completion of multimillion-dollar projects through coordinating tasks, developing partnerships and being positive and building positive rapport with architects, engineers, local officials, vendors, and clients while maintaining a strict budget. Some of the strengths that I could bring to the county commissioners will be project planning and execution, financial planning and budgeting, collaborating with team members to achieve forward progress or forward movement for Wayne County, and problem, problem solvers and decision-making. You know, that, that, that's something that I really enjoy, the problem solving, getting together with a group of people and hashing out what's gonna be right for the next move or right for the citizens of, uh, Wayne County. My community, my community leadership consists of being a member of the Wayne Chamber of Commerce Military Affairs Committee and a member of a North Carolina Community Federal Credit Union Board, Board Member and a member of Wayne Community College Board of Trustees. I want to use my qualifications to continue to move Wayne County forward and ask the Wayne County Commission, Commissioners to consider me for District 3, District 3 vacancy. And, um, you know, being, being a resident of, of Wayne County for so many years, I, I've seen progress from age, you know, living here and up to now, there's progress being made. And I want to be part of the team with the county commissioners to continue to move it forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. We appreciate you being here. Um, we'd like to thank you for your time and your interest in the position. Uh, you're the third person that'll be interviewing today and wanted to let you know that, uh, Commissioner Kamarti is joining us, uh, via the, uh, conference call.
Yes, sir.
So, good afternoon.
Good evening, sir, good afternoon.
Yeah, and we will give you up to 10 minutes and you can, uh, let us know, uh, what, your qualifications and why you feel like you'd be the best candidate.
Okay, thank you, good evening, good afternoon, gentlemen. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to come before you today, um, Chairman Mayo. Thank God too, most definitely him. But, um, I'm a long-term resident of Wayne County, being 54 years as of Sunday, that was my birthday. Um, my, I've worked in different aspects of Wayne County, I worked in the school system, um, with the Division of Prisons for quite a bit of time. Um, did some volunteer work with the Chamber of Commerce, um, the Red Cross, uh, United Way. I've learned a lot of different aspects of how and how the city and county government works, what it takes to do things behind the scene. Um, my volunteer, um, situation with my church, um, it has given me an understanding on what it takes to make things work as a group, not just one individual. Living in Wayne County has been an awesome, awesome experience. We've, we have experienced traumatic things from floods, hurricanes, tornadoes, and situations where we had to deal with in my job with the prison system where we had evacuation at moments' notice. You know, it gave me the opportunity to understand what teamwork, what teamwork can be done. Just being through what we've gone through the last couple of months, it has shown how together Wayne County has came. Um, it's shown what we have learned from one another, what we can do to broaden our, our scope of things that we gotta do. Getting our infrastructure a little bit better in place, um, economically, seeing what we gonna have to do down when the, after the budget stuff takes place. Looking at how schools will have to function and looking at how the teachers and how the staff is making it where the kids can function at, in an abnormal situation, it's been awesome. To see them distribute food and, uh, it's, it's been awesome. I've learned a lot through my training, through the leadership of Wayne County. Um, I've had the opportunity to see how each industry works. I've had the opportunity now to teach that to the other employees of Wayne County. And it has given me a great, a great, um, opportunity to see how awesome we are as a group. Um, my, I have a passion for giving back to others. Um, it's, if I've gotten the opportunity to help someone smile, then I've done what my, my Father God had put me here to do. And that's, that's a great passion of mine. I enjoy, um, just doing whatever I can to help other, others. But the passion that I've gotten just to see, you know, through how we function and
through how we function and how we can be a blessing to others in all walks of life, what we can do as a county to broaden our scopes in the future to bring in people from the outside, from like industries, to bring forth that families can take care of their own families. And just being that and just having the opportunity to serve with a group of gentlemen as yourself is a great honor. Being able to serve and send it to, in the Commissioners, his seat, is a great honor. And I thank you for allowing me to come before you. I thank you for even considering my resume. It's a great honor to be able to, be able to come here today. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we have done our interviews, so at this time, I will call us into recess until April the 28th at 2:00, when we will come back and make our announcement and decide on one of these three candidates.
Mr. Chairman, before you fully recess, I did have a question. Our counsel, are we permitted to contact any or all of these candidates to ask them any questions?
Yes, you can.
So, we can just call them up individually and ask them, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to verify.
Okay.
Good point, good point.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dick. I know we've got part of them, but we have all of them's phone numbers.
What can provide those?
It should be on the resumes.
Mr. Camardi, did you understand what we're talking about here?
I think I heard a question asked where we allowed or permitted our interns to call and speak to either one of them if we wanted to.
That is correct. And their phone number.
And the answer to that was what?
Yeah, your phone number.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the answer is yes, you can do that.
You can do that. And the phone number's on the resume that you have.
I don't see it on Mr. Coley's.
You don't see it on?
It is. Is it on there? Yes, sir.
Yes, on the front, first page, or is it? No?
Second page.
Second page.
At the very top.
Mobile was there.
I got it, I got it.
Okay, all right, we're good. Is there any other?
I did not see, I'm still looking for Mr. Coley.
Second page.
Second page?
Second page at the top.
Top right.
All right, I see it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other comments or anything? Okay, I declare us in recess until April the 28th, the 2020 at 2:00 AM. We're in recess.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
Okay. I just want to ask you a question, was this being videotaped by the?
Yes. Yes, it was.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to know that.
Okay, all right, we are in recess, thank you so much.